In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, the Board Secretary has forwarded notice of this meeting for advertising by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Secaucus Town Hall on the bulletin board at the Education Administration building as well as notice being provided to the Bergen Record Jersey Journal and District website.
Flag salute.
I'd like to read into the minutes the official election results of November the 5th, 2024. Gerald Lyons, 2,347 votes. Tatiana Geller, 2,306 votes. Melissa Howard, 2,171 votes. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Fogarty to administer the oath of office to our newly elected board members.
Michelle, maybe if you step over here so we can have the microphone here.
Yes.
Perfect. May I ask that you repeat after me, please? Aye and state your name.
Aye, Tatiana Geller.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same?
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state?
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people.
And at your choice?
So help me God.
And repeat after me, please. Aye. State your name, please.
Aye, Tatiana Geller.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law?
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of member of a Board of Education?
For the office of member for the Board of Education.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter?
And I'm not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to revised Statute 19:4-1?
Pursuant to revised Statute 19:4-1.
Nor disqualified due to a conviction of a crime?
Nor disqualified due to the conviction of the crime.
Or offense?
Or offense.
Listed in New Jersey statute?
Listed in New Jersey statute.
18A?
18A.
Colon 12-1?
Colon 12-1.
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially?
Impartially.
And justly perform?
And justly perform.
All the duties of that office?
All the duties of that office.
According to the best of your ability?
According to the best of my ability. So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Melissa, you want me to hold the Bible for you?
May be seated.
I charge a very small fee for Bible holding, by the way.
Repeat after me, please. Aye and state your name.
I am Melissa Howard.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same?
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state?
And to...
And to the governments?
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people. So help me God.
Please state after me. Aye. And state your name, please.
I am Melissa Howard.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law?
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of member of a Board of Education?
For the office of member of the Board of Education.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter?
And that I am not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to revised Statute?
Pursuant to revised Statute.
19:4-1?
19:4-1.
Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense?
Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense.
Listed in New Jersey statute?
Listed in New Jersey statute.
18A 12-1?
18A 12-1.
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially?
Impartially.
And justly perform?
And justly perform.
All the duties of that office?
All the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability. So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I would ask the new board members if they would just include their names in that document so that I can notarize them and provide them to the business administrator. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I will take the roll call. Mr. Bartletta?
Present.
Mr. Bolonino?
Present.
Ms. Diadetta?
Present.
Mr. Barry?
Present.
Mr. Diombre?
Present.
Ms. Geller?
Present.
Ms. Howard?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Mr. Lyons?
Present.
Okay, at this time, I'd now like to open the floor up for the election for the president of the Board of Education. The nominations, please. Are there any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Kelly Diadetta for president.
Second.
I'd like to nominate Enrico Bolonino, second.
Are there any further nominations? May I ask if there are any further nominations?
Are there any further nominations?
Then we'll, well, we will, we will close the nominations and pursuant to the board's policy, the vote will be taken on the first person nominated, who is Ms. Diadetta. And, Michelle, if you would call the roll, please.
Mr. Bartletta? Yes, this is for Ms. Diadetta as president. Mr. Bolonino?
No.
Ms. Diadetta? Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Ms. Geller?
No.
Ms. Howard?
No.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
No.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You need to call for the nominations for the office of vice president.
Okay. At this time, I would like to call for nominations for the office of vice president.
Um, you may.
At this time, I would like to nominate Lance Bartletta as vice president.
Second.
At this time, I would like to nominate Enrico Bolonino as vice president.
I second the nomination.
Grace, call the roll?
May I ask if there are any further nominations?
Oh, I'm sorry. Are there any other nominations on the floor? No.
Thank you. Call the roll for Mr. Bartletta, please.
Grace, call the roll for Mr. Bartletta, please.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
No.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Ms. Geller?
No.
Ms. Howard?
No.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Congratulations, Mr. Bartletta.
I make a motion to accept the recommendation of the acting superintendent and business administrator slash board secretary to approve and adopt Resolutions R 1.01 through R 1.22 for the school year 2024-2025 as described below for the following.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Ms. Geller? Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Abstain.
Passing.
Okay. Public forum? I don't believe so. I think we looked at it when we came in. Nope.
Nope. Board member comments?
Yeah. Board, board member comments? I'd just like to take an opportunity to welcome Ms. Geller, Mr. Lyons, and welcome Melissa Howard. She's been here, so it's not really a welcome back, maybe is a better way. And I, on behalf of the board, we look forward to working together as a team. And I thank you for trusting me to be president again this year, and I promise to give the same devotion and dedication that I gave last year this year. And I know that we can do great things together. Congratulations to Lance on your nomination of vice president. Look forward to working with you again this year. Thank you. And happy new year, everyone.
May I ask, is that the end of the meeting? Are we going to have a closed session, discuss anything that might be important for us to hear that might have happened recently?
I don't believe so. Charlie, is there anything that you need to discuss in private with the board?
I, I would like a short closed session to discuss anything important that we should know about his new trustees.
Okay, I, I don't know. Is that something? Is there agenda items?
We listed the meeting as having, action will be taken. Those were the items that the board took action on this evening. Those are the listed ones. It doesn't mean we can't have others, but if we're not going to have one, I would accept that, that we could be, I familiarized with things that might be important to us as trustees with it before the next meeting. Thank you. So there will be an executive session scheduled before the next regular meeting, which is January the...
Sixteenth.
January the sixteenth. There'll be an executive agenda that will be published in advance of that, which will contain a number of items that all of the board members will be informed about with regard to outstanding litigation personnel and, and other contract matters. So that will occur at that meeting.
Right. And just so you're clear, Mr. Lyons, this is not the January meeting. This is just a reorganization meeting. So as Mr. Fogarty, I lost your name, I'm sorry, Mr. Fogarty had mentioned, we will, you know, through the month, and Charlie and Grace and the business office will get together items for us, and we will meet in closed session for January and then public session in January. This is just a reorganization with the actionable items.
I'm familiar. I've been to nine of them. But I also know that we made a point of the entire time we were running and the entire time we met anyone, including meeting with the BA, the acting superintendent yourself, to say we will not discuss anything that we should not be privy to until we're sworn in. And now that we're sworn in, I was hopeful that we'd be updated on anything that's important to know but cannot be discussed and open. I will wait the next two weeks until that gets done. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Comments? No?
Yeah, I just wanted to congratulate the new members and look forward to another great year.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.